Let's start. This is a virtual meeting. We're going to open the meeting first. This is a virtual meeting and the prayer and pledge of allegiance will be waived. Madam Clerk, will you please read the role?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Forbes.
One another time.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls. Councilmember Balls.
Michael's mic is off.
Councilmember Ostashe.
Present.
Mayor Clock.
Here.
Did we confirm if Balls was present? Or?
Councilmember Balls, do you have your microphone off?
Um, okay, here we go.
Oh, there you are, Michael. Thank you. I do see you now. We have nine members present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we start the regular order of business of council tonight, I want to directly address the members of the public who have joined this Saginaw City Council virtual meeting or who will view it later. So even now, pretty much everyone has heard and seen the tragic events in Minneapolis, Minnesota involving the death of George Floyd caused by the actions of a police officer. Not only was his death avoidable, had proper use of force been employed, but it was preventable had the other three officers present intervened to uphold their sworn duty to protect every member of the public, no matter their skin color. Today, your city council meets for the first time since Mr. Floyd's death and the many protests that have happened worldwide since. It is unfortunate that our schedule required a three-week hiatus at this critical time, but the simple fact is, it did. Nevertheless, we are meeting today. And in meeting today, I believe it is imperative for this council as a body to condemn the discrimination, systemic racism, and social inequality that has marked the black community's experience in this country for over 400 years. And for us to dedicate ourselves to doing everything we can to eliminate those evils from our city. Excuse me. Together with Mayor Pro Tem Moore and with the help of the City Manager's Office, a draft resolution has been prepared for council's consideration tonight. And during the later additional motions portion of our meeting, I will be moving approval of this resolution for discussion by council and hopefully for its adoption. I have forwarded it to all the council members for your review before the meeting. Hopefully, you have all had a chance to do so. There will be an opportunity for discussion and amendment if desired, but I am looking forward to this council. I'm looking forward to this council addressing this issue in an appropriate, strong, and proper manner. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our regular order of business, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could quickly remind everyone, if you're not speaking, please turn off your microphone. I have no further announcements, Mayor, but we do have a certificate of recognition tonight. It's honoring the work and legacy of Bruce Lehman.
Thank you. Tonight, that will be read by Councilmember Jamie Forbes. Ms. Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that Bruce and some of his friends are celebrating at Safe Socialists at his house right now. So I am so very pleased to deliver this recognition. City of Saginaw Certificate of Recognition presented to Bruce Lehman. Whereas Bruce Lehman, a lifelong Saginaw resident, has been a friendly face and force for good in our community for several decades. Bruce has taught classical piano by his mother as a young child and has always used his love for music to connect with people from all over the Great Lakes Bay region. And whereas Bruce studied music at Delta College and later became the facility manager for Zion Lutheran Church in Saginaw, where he was known for his organizational skills and willingness to help the leadership and congregation. Bruce is also remembered by many as the regular of Old Town. Entertaining guests at the Red Eye Coffee House with his vast knowledge of song and musical talents on the piano. And whereas Bruce was the first teacher enlisted by Major Courts for Minors near ten years ago, where they first began giving free music lessons to Saginaw children. Since that time, he has taught nearly forty children every week, impacting over one thousand students in the Saginaw community. His positive impact on so many students in Saginaw has left a melody in our hearts and made Saginaw a more beautiful place, both now and for generations to come. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby deem it an honor and a privilege to extend this certificate of recognition to Bruce Lehman. Further, I urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding achievements and contributions of Bruce Lehman to the City of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I hereby, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this eighth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2020. Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostashe, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II, and Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Forbes. Unfortunately, in this day, we are unable to congratulate you and Mr. Lehman and the family personally, but please understand you have our sincerest respect and we honor you for everything you have done. Your legacy is tremendous. So, we give you thanks. Would you care, Mr. Lehman, or any family member care to say anything at this time?
Um, Bruce is, this is John, John Vowell with Major Courts. I grew up with Bruce. I'm just going to say a few minutes, then I'm going to let the crowd say the rest. Is that, I grew up, I was four years old, growing up next to Bruce, and I saw the magic that he had with children that when Katrina and I went to open our studio, we weren't going to do it without Bruce Lehman being a part of it. He's given us the nine years of the greatest communication and friendship to these children in this community. I've seen him change thousands of people in this community, young adults, and I want the community to know that he has touched the lives of your young adults at the Red Eye for so many years, what, twenty-five years? He's given them not only his education, but his understanding and love on a regular basis. And with that alone, I love that man and I appreciate all of you at the council and Mayor. You guys do a great job in this community and the community needs you. I'm going to end it all right now, real fast, with a, "We love Bruce."
One, two, three, "We love Bruce." Thank you, thank you.
And there it is.
Thank you, Mr. Vowell, and thank you to all the friends and family who have celebrated Mr. Lehman's life with us today.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys have a great night.
You too. Madam Clerk, our next item.
Yes, Mayor, we do have another certificate of recognition. It's honoring the life and service of Louis J. Furlo Sr. And I do believe that comments will be made by Paul Furlo, Louis Furlo Jr., and Chris Furlo, following the presentation.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Ostashe, were you going to be able to read that? Did you have it in front of you, or you want me to go ahead with it?
Your microphone?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it, otherwise I would, and I couldn't find it.
That's fine. I have it here.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to read it. "On behalf of the City Council, myself, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Louis J. Furlo Sr. Whereas, on behalf of the Saginaw City Council, we honor the memory of Louis J. Furlo Sr., whose successful and abundant life came to a close after ninety-one years on April 22nd, 2020. And whereas Louis was a beloved husband, father, and grandfather. He lives to cherish his memory, his wife Veronica, three sons Louis Jr., Paul, and Christopher, several beloved grandchildren, and an entire community of family, friends, and colleagues. And whereas Louis held a sixty-year career with Saginaw's Morley Companies Inc., serving as the chairman of the board since the mid-1980s. Under his leadership, Morley Companies has grown to become one of Saginaw County's largest employers with over one thousand employees and has evolved into an operation that serves Fortune 500 clients for a wide range of business services, from contact help centers to exhibits and displays, as well as meetings and incentives. And whereas Louis spent much of his time, of his life, in Saginaw and was the past recipient of the Vision of Free Enterprise Award from the Saginaw County Chamber of Commerce. He was a member of the Board of Directors of the Field Neuroscience Institute of Saginaw and also a charter member of Legatus International, an organization dedicated to improving the moral and intellectual facilities of corporate leaders worldwide. And whereas Louis will forever be remembered for his commitment to his family and his community, as well as his commitment to serving others. Words cannot convey how Louis can enrich the lives of so many in this city. His death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life, outstanding achievements, and contributions of Louis J. Furlo Sr. to the City of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this eighth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2020. Signed, myself, by myself, Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostashe, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. I would encourage family members or those who wish to speak to now, open your mics, and we would love to hear from you.
Well, we just appreciate that so very much. This is Paul Furlo, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of our mother Veronica and my two brothers, Louis Furlo Jr. and Christopher Furlo. And as importantly, on behalf of the three thousand Morley associates, of course, who so warmly looked to our Father as the patriarch of Morley. You know, I could tell you many interesting stories about our Father's connection to Saginaw, but this probably says it all. No matter where his travels took him around the world, and I did do this in Hong Kong, I saw him do this in Monte Carlo, I saw him do this in Vienna, I saw him do this in Bangkok, Thailand, where no matter where he was, he would brag about his hometown of Saginaw, Michigan. And he instilled that pride, not only in us one in our family, but he instilled that pride in Saginaw and all of our three thousand associates, most of whom who not only work in Saginaw County, but live throughout the county and live throughout the Great Lakes Bay region. So, we are particularly grateful to all of you, and my Father would be specifically grateful for all of your service to our community on the council and so appreciative of all you're doing to make sure that Saginaw is the special place that it is. So, we'd like to thank you for this honor, and we look forward to warmly being headquartered here in Saginaw for the foreseeable future, decades and decades to come. Obviously, the three of us were all born and raised, live here in Saginaw, own homes here in Saginaw, and work here in Saginaw. We look forward to continue to supporting our terrific community and appreciate this honor and appreciate all that you do. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Furlo. Thank you for your words about the city, and we certainly feel it appropriate to have honored your Father for all he has done for our community. It was an honor. I knew him, and not well, but I certainly knew him, met him, and talked to him, and he was a tremendous individual. So, it is a loss for our community, but we really, really respect him, your, the Morley Companies Inc., and are glad to hear you will be here a long time. With that, Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor, our next order of business is public input.
All right. Public input. We welcome to all, we will give welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight and from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. I will remind you that you got to check your mic when it's time to make sure it is open for you to speak. When you are asked to speak, let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our first speaker is Alex DePerry.
Welcome, Mr. DePerry. You can unmute your mic, we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm speaking on behalf of the Old Town Merchants Association, specifically about the opening of Hamilton, South Hamilton and North Hamilton, for expanded restaurant service. We, as an association, do support this motion, and, you know, there are a couple of logistics to be worked out in terms of deliveries, et cetera, but we strongly support it, and any questions, let me know, and that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. DePerry. We appreciate the support. We think it's an excellent idea as a way to try and reopen the Saginaw economy, and we'll, hopefully, we'll do that. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker, Mayor, is Evelyn McGovern.
Ms. McGovern, we'd love to hear from you, and now if you will unmute your mic as well.
Um, thank you. Greetings to council and the citizens. I'm present to officially thank Mayor Clock, Mayor Pro Tem Moore, Councilwoman Jamie Forbes, and Councilwoman Autumn Schistner. Also, a special thanks to Phil Kawat, Steve Ruth, and Sheriff Fettersville, Dick Garber, and Tom Miller Jr. for supporting the solidarity demonstration we held on June 5th. I, as organizer, I'm sorry, with Michelle McCoy, had a peaceful event in memory of Milton Hall and George Floyd. When we planned this event, we were unaware of any other rallies being held in the city. The purpose of this rally was to stand up against racial injustice and police brutality and give the Saginaw community an opportunity to be heard and participate in the demonstration. I hope a new city-community advisory board and LPAC committee is formed for increased transparency and to strengthen the relationship between the police department and the community with diverse citizens that will be engaged and sustainable. A young lady wrote who participated in the rally named Nita Williams, "While I disliked the purpose for the event, the experience was amazing. It felt good to play a part in something I stand for. Everyone was there for a purpose, so many ethnicities. It was emotional to see how others truly stand with us. The love in their eyes, the anger on our behalf, the sadness for lives lost, the continued disappointment for the way Milton Hall's life ended. We all came out with the purpose to stand for Milton Hall and to stand for George Floyd." And Milton Hall cousin Pastor Michael Washington wrote these words after the event. "I'm so proud of my City of Saginaw to view the peaceful protest brought pure joy and pride to my heart. This is how you are supposed to represent, with love, not looting, with boldness, not burning, unified, not divided. Where am I from? I'm from Saginaw, Michigan. And this poem, this reflects my feelings, and it's by Maxwell de Waal. Even now, as broken as you may feel, you're still so strong. There's something to be said for how you hold yourself together and keep moving, even though you feel like shattering. Don't stop. This is your healing. It doesn't have to be pure, you're graceful. You just have to keep going. I plan to keep going, and I'm serving my community, and I challenge the citizens of Saginaw to get going or to keep going. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. McGovern. We appreciate your comment. Madam Clerk, who would be next, please?
Our final speaker tonight is Barbara Reese.
Ms. Reese, if you will open your mic, please. We're ready for you.
Barbara Reese, are you ready? Yeah, I'm not sure, Mayor, what's going on. You may want to move on.
Item then, Clerk. Next item?
Yeah, Floyd, I think we were having trouble. We can't see you right now, and your mic, your mic is going in and out.
Let's try. Am I, am I visible now?
Well, we can hear you. There you go.
Okay, that's, all right. Hi again. Okay. All right. What, where are we next? I believe it's remarks of council, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, it is remarks of council, and we will begin with Millen.
Today, we, all right, since we're ready, Councilmember Millen, are you prepared? And if so, please start.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clock. There are many, many things that come to mind to speak about this evening, but we've all heard a lot of words, a lot of talk, and I think the next thing we want to look at as a council is going to be what actions we can do to move forward from recent events. So, I'm not going to take a lot of time, and other than one mention that the rally at City Hall last Thursday, put on by the NAACP, to me seemed to bring together a wide spectrum of civic leaders, both elected and leaders of other types of organizations, and I think that's the kind of foundation for what we're going to do from here on, is going to work. So, we're going to have some other discussion on this later in the meeting. I think I'll save my comments for that.
Very good. Next, Councilmember Scherzer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have a brief thing I want to read and some encouraging words. "Let America be America again. Let it be the dream it used to be. Let it be the pioneer on the plain, seeking a home where he himself is free. America was never America to me. Let America be the dream the dreamers dreamed. Let it be that great, strong land of love, where never kings connive nor tyrants scheme. That any man be crushed by one above. It never was America to me. I am the poor white fooled and pushed apart. I'm the Negro bearing slavery scars. I am the red man driven from the land. I am the immigrant clutching to hope I seek and finding only the same old stupid plan of dog eat dog, of mighty crush the weak. Oh, let America be America again, the land that never has been, that yet must be the land where every man is free. Out of the rack and ruin of our death, we, the people, must redeem the land, the mines, the plants, the rivers, the mountains, and the endless plain. All, all the stretch of these great green states. And make America be America again." A great American poet, Langston Hughes, wrote that eight decades ago, and it's even more relevant today for optimism, for equality, and for justice. "You are Saginaw. I am Saginaw. We are all Saginaw strong." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Scherzer. Next is Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good evening, everyone, everyone at home, my fellow council persons. I'm really excited and I'm overwhelmed at the, at the demonstrations that have been displayed in our city. They have been peaceful. I think they've been productive. But I too, like John Millen, say that if we're not going to do anything, but I think we are. I think that we're going to move towards some things that will make us a better city, even greater than, yeah. I wanted to give a shout-out to Ms. McGovern and Michelle for them even thinking about trying to put together a memorial for Mr. Hall, for Milton Hall, I'm sorry. And I'd also like to thank Dick Garber, who stepped in at the last minute and just opened up his lot and everything, so that it could go off, as well as he purchased water, ice, popsicle him and Tommy Miller Jr. and their staff, and I just wanted to thank them for at least, at least thing to help us. And shout-outs, kudos go to them. And I'd like to do a special shout-out to our yard people. I must say that we are on top of the grass, even with the flood. It's not all cut, but at the corners, you can see, you can see. And so I'd like to do a shout-out to Phil Kawat and his staff for putting in the extra work, because I know that they did a lot of this over the weekend. So I'd like to just personally thank them, and thank all of the staff at City Hall. I know that we've got some trying times ahead of us, and I think, Mayor, I can assure you that this team that we have now is capable and willing, I think, to make some changes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next is Councilmember Bench.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'd first like to start by saying congratulations to Bruce Lehman. When John Vowell spoke with all the young people that Bruce has influenced over the years and decades down in Old Town, I'm one of them. I've known Bruce for probably the last twenty years of my life. And to know him at seventeen years old, and then to grow up and have children of my own who ended up taking piano lessons from him at Major Courts for Minors, it's just a wonderful blessing for myself and for my family, and we love Bruce very, very much and thank him for everything he's done. To piggyback from my fellow council members, I can't say enough how proud I am of our city for coming out and making their voices heard, for holding us accountable, for putting a fire under us to reassess what we're doing, what we have done. Because we all know that regardless of whether it's our police department right now or not, what goes on in the national news is felt by everybody here as we watch it. And I know for a lot of people who see these things, it doesn't matter what work has been done and what progress has been made, because it's just a matter of time for them before it's them or someone they care about on the receiving end of some sort of police mistreatment or racial brutality. The things we are seeing go on in our country, it extends well beyond our agencies of authority. It is exposing the really ugly heart of some of the people that we live with in our own communities. And I want to state unequivocally that black lives matter to me. And if you don't agree with that statement or can't say it yourself without following it with some sort of qualifier, I don't want your support, and I don't seek your approval. To the protesters, please keep our feet to the fire and keep your voices out there. We need you guys to be the inspiration for us to act boldly. And we need you to help because it's not just a city of Saginaw problem. It's a county problem. It is a national problem. We need national standards set. There's only so much the city can do when we have union labor agreements that we have to abide by or negotiate. I want to say to our police chief, for what it's worth, sir, you have my confidence. Mr. Morales, you have my confidence. And I say that because I've watched you work tirelessly to change the culture in our police department and to be responsive to our citizens and our community, which is not to say that there is not plenty of work to be done. But I would say that any group that endorses Trump's reelection bid and lacks confidence in our police chief is lending credibility to our police chief, as far as I'm concerned.
Your three minutes have concluded, Councilmember Bench.
Thank you.
My microphone was off, so you got a few seconds there.
I never use it, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Bench. Next will be Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to piggyback on a couple of my fellow council members and repeat that I, that I totally agree that we must not tolerate police brutality and we must take action to distinguish it. My heart breaks for George Floyd and his family. My heart breaks for my friends and my neighbors that have been victims at the hands of police. But more than that, I know that we must turn this frustration and anger into action. As a community organizer myself, I commend the organizers of the, of the powerful rallies last week, including Ms. McGovern, and their incredible efforts and successes to bring our community together. It was an absolute thing of beauty. I trust that they understand that this is not just about the gatherings. It's about having the conversations and using the existing relationships to find a path to powerful progress together. I'm thankful that many policies and strategies have crossed my path in the past week. I'm looking forward to working with organizers and my fellow city counselors and city staff to explore them and see how we can learn from how other cities are, are fighting against this and innovate solutions that fit our community. There is so much to learn and I think if we want really good policy, we have to do the real work to ensure that the steps we take are the right steps. And I encourage residents of the city of Saginaw to reach out to me. I am listening to you. I think that we are all listening to you. And then hold me accountable, just as Annie said, please hold me accountable along with the other elected officials at other levels of government. The city of Saginaw Police, I, I hope that they will ban the use of force above the shoulders and breathing impairment as a means of controlling someone. The chief has agreed to do this, but I hope that he will go ahead and take this action. And as far as I'm concerned, he can't take that action soon enough. And I think the policies instituted in Buna Vista today are an excellent model of that. Later in our meeting, I plan to make a motion to direct the city manager to form a committee to explore the establishment of a human rights commission capable of not only investigating police brutality, but also injustice and discrimination of any time in the city of Saginaw. I'll fight for this committee to have power to hold our officers accountable. There is so much to do. What I mentioned is nowhere near enough. And I know that I will work to make that just a starting point and I, and I am certain I'm not the only one. I would once again like to thank Bruce Lehman for, for his incredible contribution to the city of Saginaw. I know that the major courts for minors team and the red eye crew are all celebrating this recognition with him tonight. And I'm, I'm, I'm just so thankful that we were able to give him the credit that he is due. So thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Excellent timing. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Forbes. Next, Councilmember Williams.
Good evening. Glad I have this opportunity to speak this evening. I'll keep it short because I've been doing a lot of talking over the last week already at different rallies, marches, on the news, whatnot. I want to say that I am extremely proud of Saginaw for what we've been doing. It is a beautiful sight. And not only am I proud of Saginaw, but honestly, I'm proud of this planet to see the things that I've been seeing via social media and the news of our, the human race rallying together for this cause of Black Lives Matter. And I want to make this clear that I want people to understand that Black Lives Matter is not anti-police. It is anti-police brutality, anti-police misconduct, not anti-police. I wouldn't follow an organization that was anti-police since my daily job is as a police officer. And also for me to denounce Black Lives Matter literally means that I don't believe that mine matters. So I just want to make that clear and I am always open for discussion at any time about anything to help, you know, resolve cultural and racial differences and bring us closer together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Next is Councilmember Oshet.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I've written something tonight that I want to read for the public. Is that Janet?
Yes, your mic.
No, shouldn't be.
No, his mic was open.
Definitely open.
Yeah, he was kind of buffering at my end.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
You're fine. Thank you. All right. So Mayor, it's just, it's just like, where do I start? First, thank you to all who have come out to peacefully protest and/or speak at a rally. In life, we must raise our voice, we have for others to hear and change to happen. I am, I am extremely proud to be part of this movement with you. Second, the council has heard you. The chief of police has heard you. Things are being reviewed as we've stated. Third, Saginaw can only, third, Saginaw can put all kinds of policy rules and legislation into place. But in the end, it is the person who must act in good faith. If an officer was to act criminally, we need to make sure that this is addressed and not swept under the rug. With that, I call on the unions to support us. I am from a pro-union household, but there are times where a union, where union action must be taken. In the recent case of George Floyd and any incident as such would be such a time. Fourth, your government in Saginaw, city staff and council are human like you. We are not perfect. We have flaws. We make mistakes as well as we do good. But when two entities are trying to solve a problem, one has to approach the other when some, one has to approach the other when something is done they don't agree with. Let them know so you can work through it. An example of this is going on social media is good. That's your First Amendment right. However, not all people in the government of Saginaw and such might see that. So make sure you round back to us as well. We must have a conversation together. Otherwise, this message is lost, the problem continues. All of our contact information is on the city website and those with a social media presence. I have my phone number and my email on my page and I encourage my constituents to use it. Last, I would like to share a final thought. My brother-in-law Tony is black. He was raised right around the corner from my house on the east side of Saginaw. He lived on Emerson in the Cathedral District. My three amazing nieces are multiracial, biracial with ancestries of African-American, Caucasian and Native American Indian. And recently, a couple of years ago, my great nephew's dad is Mexican. I love these people dearly. So like you in this movement, this is personal for me as well. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oshet. Next is Councilmember Ball.
Good evening. My heart is kind of, is messed up thinking about this situation. When I seen what happened to Mr. Floyd, I think about what happened in the city of Saginaw when Milton Hall was assassinated. I think it's one of the worst, the worst things I've ever seen in my life to see a life snuffed out like that from people who did not care about black lives. Hopefully, we will never have something like this happen again in the city of Saginaw. It's one of the reasons why I ran for city council because I was so teed off about this situation. I thank God that we have a chief of police now who I don't think will stand for anything like that. He's making sure that the police are trained to do the right thing in situations that may occur like a Milton Hall situation again. See that unspeakable human being with his neck, with his, with his knee on that man's neck for eight, over eight minutes was terrible. And he seemed like he was just doing it and enjoying it. You know, it was just terrible to see that. Thank God, I hope, I hope to God that this guy get all adjusted that he need to compensate him. I hope he never gets out of jail. Him and other officers that was involved in that situation, I hope they never get out of jail. They don't deserve to. Too many times we have seen in America where a black man was killed for a situation that didn't warrant it and the police officers got off. I'm tired of seeing police officers get off of doing what's wrong. So hopefully, unfortunately, situations like this, I don't know why death have a tendency to bring us together. It kind of remind me of a funeral with a loved one. And, and at the funeral, when you see people that you've never seen before, your cousins or relatives, you haven't seen them for years, but all of a sudden you all, everybody come in to mourn the situation with their loved ones is gone. Mr. Floyd, we didn't know him, but we feel him and we have felt his presence in Saginaw with the situation that happened with Milton Hall. And thank God that it brought us all together. All the different nationalities that been at the route, at the rallies is unbelievable. I think this is what God wants. Regardless of who we are, what positions that we hold, how much money we got, how much money we don't have, we just need to be like a family. God want us to be family. And that seemed like at the rallies that I attended, with all the different nationalities there, the young people, the older people, it was like a family there. And I thank God for bringing us, I hate to, hope to Milton, Milton or Mr. Floyd, life had to be snuffed out to bring our families together. So hopefully, we will continue to have this dialogue and our families will come together and do the best what's good for all the family members. Jesus, another despicable human being, another guy to talk about the money that's been lost in America.
Michael, Michael, I have to cut you off. Your, your three minutes are up. I apologize, but I must do so. Michael, have you heard me?
Yeah, I heard you.
Okay. Again, thank you for your comments. It's now time for mine. I first of all, have said some of the things I wanted to say yet tonight. I've already done that. But I also want to concur with everything my colleagues on this council has said in their comments today. I too am thankful for those who have organized or led these peaceful protests and rallies. I want to thank all those who participated, marched, protested and spoke out against the racism, the, the death of George Floyd and of Milton Hall. What the bottom line is, is we, the white community, we have an obligation here to not be silent when incidents or occasions of racism, discrimination bias occur. This is one of those occasions and I hope we do, I hope we do speak out as a body to that. I also want, excuse me. I also want to second Councilmember Bench's confidence expressed in our police chief who has been working for several years now, since the, since after he was appointed after the Milton Hall incident, to change the culture in our police department, to change the policies and procedures in a way that hopefully will prevent another Milton Hall here. And I want to express thanks to our city manager who has led our staff along the same lines. I do want to say it's up to us as a council now to do our part. I need to shift gears a little bit because there are still some other issues out there, including the coronavirus epidemic. It is not over. It is not going to be over for a long time. We still need to social distance. We still need to practice protection of those around us and those who are susceptible. So please, I urge all of you to continue the safe practices, use PPE and social distance. And finally, the, one of the most important things that is still out there that we have to deal with is the census. We all need to speak in our community for involving everyone in our census. It is very critical. We all know what's at stake and the loss of funds if we don't have an accurate count. So please make sure you get the word out, participate any way you can in the census counting, working and volunteering with the United Way and the Census Count Committee. Please participate. Thank you. And that is all I have. Madam Clerk, the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from the city manager.
Mr. Manager, your reports, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a number of items to update council on this evening. And I will start with talking about changes that we need to make at the police department, which many of you have mentioned, but I think we need to get into some specifics. And Chief Ruth and I have been talking about potential changes since the incident in Minneapolis happened. And incidents like that erode the trust in the police departments throughout the country, not just in the location where it happened. So it's important for us, I think, to have a focus on equity, transparency and accountability. We have done a lot since Milton Hall was killed in the city of Saginaw. And you all know that and we're trying to communicate that as well. I think we were one of the first departments in the area to have body cameras, in-car video and other video in our vehicles. We increased our, less lethal use of force equipment in the city and we changed a number of policies. We started working with community mental health. We formed ALPAC and several other items that we've done. But policing is local. And I think we've seen a potential national guideline, but policing is local, as I said, and it's incumbent upon us to make changes. And we also look to the state of Michigan because the state oversees MCOS with certified police officers in Michigan. And they are also taking quick action to make changes in the state legislature. And I'm certain that the governor is willing to make those changes as well. I will also mention that I, I understand that one of the council members did mention a resolution on forming community oversight board. If you want to do that, that's fine, but it's not necessary. Chief and I have been talking about that for the past week as well. And today I have pulled the former agreement that we had with the Department of Justice for a police oversight committee. And that will serve as the basis for what we do moving forward. But I also want to look at some other communities who have been doing it in Michigan for a long longer and see what they have that works and what doesn't work. Is it going to be something that can be set up overnight? No, I don't think overnight because I think we want to adopt best practices, but it's definitely something that we want to do. And I think there's more that can be done too. We see a lot of training and we've done training for mental health, but in my view, policing, police officers shouldn't be the first step in dealing with mental health. So I think it's incumbent upon us to talk to our state legislators and governor about increasing funding for community mental health as well. And also, the ALPAC press conference on Friday, if anyone saw or attended that, there was discussion there about the need for Spanish-speaking officers as well. How do we address that? That is, Hispanics are one of the largest growing demographics in the country. So it's incumbent upon us to see that coming and think of ways that we can address communication as well. I am happy with the changes that Chief is looking at and it's far more than we've talked about. So you will see those coming soon. And I think as Councilmember Williams mentioned, there has been a lot of involvement from the major police chiefs and the sheriff in this interaction throughout the county. So I'm hopeful that other police departments will also be willing to do similar to us. And we've had comments about the Michigan State Police and as you know, they do. And as you know, they do, uh, work in the city quite a bit with, uh, major case squad for investigations and also embedded, uh, Department of Correction as well as Patrol. Uh, we all know that the, um, the state government is responsible for Michigan State Police. So if we, um, want changes there, I think that's something that, um, we communicate to the state as well. Always feel free to contact me regarding any of these issues. That I'll, I'll move on to some of our other items that, um, we've been talking about. You all have probably had a chance to see the presentation by Public Services Deputy Director Beth London. Um, it was posted to the city's YouTube channel. If there are questions about the presentation or any of the projects, please send them to me or Vicky Davis in my office. And we can have, um, Beth London or the city engineer or Phil Carwalk contact you about a specific project. Or, um, if we think there's a need and council would like, we can have Beth join us at our next meeting or a future meeting as well. And, um, we've also received questions about opening City Hall. And we do have a timeline for that. We are, um, aiming for July 1st. And the reason why that's out a few weeks is because, uh, we, we have some items to take care of before we reopen the building. We're currently bringing workers back. Uh, most of our staff should be back this week. Um, there may be a few others who are still off, um, either for, for various, for, for various reasons. And, um, they will probably remain off a little longer, but, uh, most of our staff will be back. We have a lot of safety protocols in place. We have PPE for our employees, masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies. And, uh, HR Director, City Manager Dennis Jordan has drafted a COVID-19 Preparedness Response Plan, which is required by, uh, the governor's executive order. And right now we're also in the, um, process of having Plexiglas installed at most of our counters in the city to protect the employees as well as the citizens and customers who come in. That is a two to three week wait because as you can imagine, those companies are, um, in pretty high demand right now. And, um, we want to make sure that we have something quality because we do plan to leave those in place, um, permanently. And, um, with the clerk's office, uh, some people have asked questions about the election. So Janet has provided me information. City council will have five positions and the Saginaw Public School Board will have two positions on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. The filing deadline is July 21st by 4:00 PM and petitions must be filed with the city clerk. School board members are eligible to pay a $100 non-refundable filing fee. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions, petitions are available by contacting the city clerk's office at 759-1480 or by emailing clerk@saginawmi.com to make arrangements to obtain packets. Any questions can be answered by calling or emailing the city clerk's office through the phone number or email address mentioned. Uh, we have a resolution on the agenda this evening as well for Old Town. An expanded service and, um, would involve some streets being closed, uh, probably for much of the summer. Um, we started to get some requests for this and, uh, the state of Michigan is having some expanded or changed liquor license allowed by, uh, bars and restaurants. And that kind of started us thinking about this. And, um, we want to make these spaces available, uh, for the restaurants and bars so that they can, um, bring their businesses back and can be successful. So we communicated with the Old Town Association and, um, we think this is a good idea. It involves the streets, um, that do, uh, serve several of the restaurants and bars down there and also the sidewalk areas for a number of them as well, particularly on Michigan Avenue. And, um, I want to emphasize too that this is not something that's just for that area. If you know of other businesses that, um, could benefit from something like this, have them contacted, contact the city manager's office or the inspections division. Uh, if it's involving alcohol, it would come back to council for that specific site. If not, it would likely be, um, an encroachment permit that we can handle administratively. So, um, we're open to working with any of our businesses in the city so that we can help them, uh, come back to capacity as soon as possible. And finally, um, last meeting, a council member asked for an update regarding, uh, the July 4th fireworks. And I know all of us appreciate the annual 4th of July fireworks display and the hard work that the fireworks committee puts into the event. And it's a longstanding tradition in the city. This year we've seen a lot of changes in longstanding traditions. We missed the annual Cinco de Mayo parade and celebration, which is one of the largest celebrations and longest running in the state of Michigan. We've, um, seen graduations postponed or canceled, open houses. There are a lot of changes due to COVID-19. It's my understanding that the Saginaw fireworks will not take place in the city this year. The city administration, some council members did have concerns with the fireworks display due to COVID-19 and the need for social distancing and a limited number of crowds. We will, uh, take the governor's executive orders into account when we're looking at any of our special events uh, that will be happening this summer or any applications that we do receive. And we, we know that the, um, things are opening up and, um, we do have crowds that are allowed now, but if you look, um, the state is always still requiring or recommending social distancing. So it's not just the number of people, but also the ability of the location to, uh, to have social distancing. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Mr. Manager, um, Madam Clerk, can we proceed on the agenda?
Yes, you are.
Question for the manager?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, are there any questions for the manager? My apologies, I should have asked.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I noticed by its absence in the clerk's announcements, we do not yet have an opening date for the convenience station. Is that correct?
Mr. Manager?
Um, I believe, um, that we were waiting, uh, for governor's orders. So if it wasn't forwarded to the clerk, I don't think we will have one, but we will double check with, um, with, uh, Public Services Director. And if we are planning one, we'll get that out on social media tomorrow.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the manager?
Yes, sir, I got a question and a comment for the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Walls.
Thank you for making that comment and I agree with you 100%. I think that policing is local too. Uh, I think that's the reason why we have so many problems in certain cities because we don't have people that come from the communities that they police. And that type of attitude is not conducive to the rest of the citizens that live in the city. I want to thank the city manager, the Human Resource Department and Chief Ruth for getting some local people involved in policing in the city of Saginaw. I think if we continue to, uh, go down that path, then we would have less problems. And I want to thank the city manager for, uh, having eyesight to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walls. Any other questions or comments, uh, of the manager? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, uh, who is this? Mr. Council, oh, Council, the manager, okay.
Yes, this is him again. To show that our department heads are watching the meeting, I did just get a text from Phil Carwalk. And, uh, Saturday, June 12th, the convenience station will be open.
All right, excellent. I'm sure we'll get the word out, uh, tomorrow and that'll be good for the public. Um, okay, any, any other questions or comments for the manager? Anybody? Madam Clerk, we can proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next order of business is consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website and on SGTV Channel 191. And I'm sure also on all council members', uh, iPads. So are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk to the consent agenda? Any exceptions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have accepted number four.
Yeah, all right, Councilmember Scherzer, accepted number four, Madam Clerk. Any other exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Councilmembers, anybody else? All right, is there a motion to approve all the consent agenda items except number four?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is carried.
Mayor, was that Councilmember Millen?
No, well, which one from the motion?
Who moved it? I don't know.
Yes, Councilmember Millen moved it.
And then it was benched at second?
Yes.
Thank you. I can't see everyone, so I can't see who's talking at, yeah, thank you.
The bane of the.
I need a name.
Okay, no problem. There is an exception, so Councilmember Scherzer, your exception.
Yeah, so, uh, I just have a question for some clarification. So we're, we're being asked to approve purchase of the Ford Lincoln for $37,541. And it's a replacement for the patrol vehicle that was involved in the car accident. Uh, and it says that the appraiser is vehicle is a total loss. So my question is, do we not get, uh, insurance on this vehicle? And wouldn't the insurance cover the replacement for total vehicle?
Mr. Manager?
I think the clerk can comment on this. Um, she usually handles the insurance, but, um, so I'm going to see if she can respond to that.
Yes, yes, thank you, uh, Manager Morales. Um, that has been turned into the insurance company and it's been confirmed that we have total replacement cost for that vehicle.
So we don't, we wouldn't be spending $37,541?
Initially, yes, we will spend that to purchase the replacement vehicle, but we will be reimbursed for the amount from the company.
Okay.
So we do have to approve a purchase first.
Thank you, thanks for the question.
Is there a motion, Councilmember Scherzer?
Yep, I move for the acceptance of, uh, the consent agenda number four.
All right, it has been moved by Councilmember Scherzer. Is there a second?
Williams.
Williams seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving item number four?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any, any opposed? It is carried, Madam Clerk. We're ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next order of business is boards, commissions and committee reports.
All right, are there any boards, commissions or committee reports from any council member?
Yeah.
Yes, one, uh,
Board.
Council, Mayor Prochem.
Regis Seven has, has been granted a grant. And so they will be giving away fruit boxes, fruit and produce boxes on a weekly basis. And if I'm not mistaken, she told me to the end of September or either the end of August. So I will be around asking people if they'd like to get a box. There is no income guideline, which means that the food would come from Bay City and it will be delivered right to your door. That is another way of things that have to happen, have to start happening in Saginaw. So I just wanted to throw that in before I forgot.
All right, any, uh, any boards, commissions or committee reports from any council?
Councilwoman Millen?
Yes, proceed.
Uh, just wanted to, uh, finish what I mentioned last meeting. The MBS International Airport Commission did hire our new manager, our former assistant manager, James Kanders. And, uh, he is, uh, basically started the job already in his assistant position. Our current manager, Jeff Nagel, retires on the 23rd of this month. So Mr. Kanders has pretty seamlessly gone into the job and is handling some very major projects, including, uh, the CARES Act that is providing funding for the loss of airport revenue. He's taking care of that.
Very good. Any, anything else from any other council member?
Yep, Councilman, Councilwoman Autumn, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Scherzer, proceed.
So for the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, we are finally going to meet this week. Uh, very excited for that as we've been, um, off for a few months. But, uh, some great packages being introduced and potentially available for our business community. So stay tuned for more information on our SED loans.
Very good. Any, any others? Any others?
I'll stash here.
Yes, Councilman Ross, yes.
Yeah, just a quick little update from the zoning board of appeals meeting. We, this month, we approved a variance for our city rescue mission. And they're going to be doing a little expansion in what it was as part of the property was zoned in two different areas and part of it was residential. So they're going to be erecting a pole barn there and actually it's not a pole barn, but a building where they can keep a lot of the furniture and supplies and stuff that they need so that when their residents need to get a home or apartment, that they have all that available for them. So a little expansion go over, over here a few blocks from my house. So that's a good thing.
Good.
Yep.
Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, uh, I, I'm regarding the planning commission. Um, I believe the next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd. Uh, we do not yet have the agenda, but my anticipation is that the, um, marijuana ordinance, so the zoning ordinance will be provided or be a topic for consideration by the planning commission. We have been provided, members of the planning commission have been provided a copy of the zoning ordinance proposed, uh, for consideration. And I anticipate that there'll be at least two items, that'll be one, and there'll be a rezoning matter for another area. But, uh, hopefully the, uh, planning commissioner will be considering and acting on that, uh, on the 23rd. Any, anything else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at ordinance introduction. We do have one this evening. It's to amend section 118.04, sunset of chapter 118, prohibition of marijuana establishments and facility of Title 11 business regulations.
Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll move, Brenda.
Is there a second on the motion to introduce?
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the proposed ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, it is carried. It will be laid over under the ordinance provision, charter provision. All right, Madam Clerk?
We are now at resolutions and we do have one. It is permitting the service of alcoholic beverages on public property along Hamilton Street.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
The bench moves.
Of course.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
I believe Bench made the motion and it sounded like Forbes' second.
Nope, Autumn.
Autumn, thank you.
I'm sure, okay. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Hearing no opposition, it is carried. All right, Madam Clerk, we are ready for the next one.
We are now at Ms. Laney's business.
This is, I am going to propose adoption of the resolution that has been drafted and presented to council by myself early this afternoon for consideration. And I would ask that there be a second for discussion.
Bench second.
It has been, uh, moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Proceed, uh, Councilmember Millen.
Yes, uh, having read the resolution, I find I am in, uh, support of all sections except the last paragraph. Uh, paragraph is the proper term. Uh, uses the phrase public health crisis. And I, I would like to see that amended, it, it, either as the author, if you would like to amend it, or I will offer an amended language. To significant public health effects. My understanding of the phrase public health crisis, that has, uh, in certain areas of law, a legal, uh, it, it can trigger or allow certain actions if something is a public health crisis. And I don't think that's the intent of, uh, this resolution. Uh, and certainly it, uh, it has, I think, as strong an effect for us if we recognize the public health implications.
Uh, thank you. I, I certainly, um, appreciate the comment. Uh, I, I, I am not, uh, familiar with the possibility of having, uh, other implications beyond what the intent of the resolution is. Is there any other comment along, uh, or in response, or considering what Councilmember Millen has said? Anybody? All right, um, you, uh, why, why don't we consider what you have said as a motion? Is there a second to the proposed amendment by Councilmember Millen? Is there a second? For purpose of discussion, I will second it and leave it, uh, is, and ask if there is any discussion from council members regarding the proposed amendment? Anybody? Okay, um, it has been moved and seconded, uh, is there, what is, are all those in favor of the proposed amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I, I think that, I only heard one in favor and I heard a number in opposition. I would, uh, unless we need a roll call, I would consider that it has failed. Madam Clerk, are you satisfied?
I believe that our charter calls for any nay votes for a roll call vote.
We will have a roll call vote, please proceed.
Williams?
Nay.
Forbes?
Nay.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore?
Nay.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Nay.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
No.
Councilmember Ostache?
Nay.
And Mayor Clark?
Nay.
We have eight nay and one aye, motion has been denied.
All right, so, uh, the amendment proposed has failed. Um, is there further discussion on the motion to approve the resolution as written? Any amendments proposed, uh, addition, or anything else? Anybody? Hearing none, then I'm gonna call for a vote on the motion as presented, uh, excuse me, on the motion as presented regarding the resolution as presented. All in fa- question? All in favor?
Wait.
Aye.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I seconded.
I still move for the motion to be accepted as presented.
It was already seconded.
Yeah.
Already moved.
I already have a main motion up for it.
I moved it, and I believe Councilmember Bench seconded my motion to adopt the resolution.
Yes.
So, having, there is a motion and a second, uh, so the motion is on the table for consideration at this point. I have asked for account, for, for discussion. Um, is there any further discussion before I call for a vote on the resolution's approval?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if it is in order, I would request a roll call vote on the main motion.
That, we will do so. Um, all in favor of the resol- of the motion to adopt the resolution? Say aye, oh no, I'm sorry, Mayor, Madam Clerk, please proceed with the roll call.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Millen?
I abstain.
I don't think that is a possible, uh, Councilmember Millen? Under our charter, there are no.
We don't entertain that.
Not.
Only if you have a monetary conflict of interest.
Oh, I thought that was one case where you could, sorry. Um, well then, I, in the interest of unanimity, I will vote with the motion.
Next?
The, the yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
We have nine members voting yea, the motion is approved.
And the adoption, the resolution has been adopted by council. I thank each and every council member. Madam Clerk, the next edit.
We are still at miscellaneous business, unless you'd like a motion to adjourn.
No, let's ask if there is any other business before. Is, is there?
Be sure.
Uh, miscellaneous motions or business to be brought before the council?
I have one, Mayor Clark.
Yes, is that?
Go back, I didn't say it, and I must apologize to our recipients of the recognition, and also the family. I would like to say congratulations, job well done. Um, I don't play the piano, but I might have to take lessons. That might be something new for me to get into. So, I'd like to tell all of our recipients tonight, congratulations and a job well done, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other? I'm sorry, speak?
Uh, this is Jamie.
Right. Councilmember Forbes?
Thank you, um, so I know that, uh, Manager Morales mentioned his interest in pursuing a police oversight committee, but, um, but I thought that this might be a good time for us to have a little more conversation about this. Um, I would particularly be interested, uh, in pursuing a human rights commission, which is a bit broader than a police oversight committee. Um, and I agree with him completely that this is a chance for us to look over how some other communities have done this, and learn from their experience, um, and make this the very best, uh, committee that we could make.
Right, um, is there, is that a motion, or just, uh?
I'd like to, um, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the city manager to assemble a committee to form a human rights commission.
All right, there is a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, is there discussion at this time?
Was that Councilmember Ostache?
Yes, ma'am.
Second, thank you.
I have a question. It is my understanding and belief that we had a program in place before, and it was dissolved, and we were bringing back a program that would cover the same thing that Councilwoman Forbes is asking. City manager, I guess I'm asking you that question because we had that committee set up before, because I requested for the leaders to come in and talk to us about where they were, what they were doing. And shortly after that, the committee was dissolved. Now, my understanding from that committee was, that committee is gonna cover the same things that Councilwoman Forbes is asking for. So I just need some clarity before I vote.
Mr. Manager, is there any response?
Yeah, um, I guess we would need to do a little more research in what Councilmember Forbes was requesting, um, the, going back to the history of the, um, previous, uh, community oversight board, I believe it was called, um, Citizens Advisory Committee, I, I think is the title that we had for it. But they, um, that deals expressly with policing in the city of Saginaw, and the details of the agreement were related to forming a committee to hear complaints about policing, to, um, provide input to the chief about policies and complaints, to provide citizens, um, participation, particularly, I believe, two members from the board to, uh, review use of force videos, and, um, I believe that those are, those were the main functions of that group. I'm, um, believe that this, uh, recommendation by Councilmember Forbes would be much broader than that, but I would leave that for, um, Councilmember to describe to the rest of the council.
So, so I agree, I'm Agent Morales, that's what I'm looking for, something a little bit broader that, uh, that covers discrimination, not just in terms of potential police brutality, but in other forms, and, um, in the areas of housing and employment. Um, I think that something broader would, um, would have the potential to do, uh, to do more good for us as a community. Um, and also, I mean, I agree that I am very curious about what, um, what the past members would say, but it's my understanding that, um, that there was not a lot of power given for the previous committee to be able to make decisions.
Right.
Uh, Councilman Millen here, um, if there, if this is formed as a commission, would it be along the lines of our other commissions? They would make recommendations to the council for action? Is that, uh, the format that we would look at?
I think that would be yet to be determined, but I would like to hope that it would have some power more than just recommendations.
And, and just from my clarification, Councilmember Forbes, you mentioned, um, issues of discrimination in both housing and employment. Are you talking in the private sector, cause?
No, uh, public sector, because that is within our purview.
Okay.
My, my question then would continue. Were it to have any powers of its own, uh, would the, uh, city attorney speak to whether that would require charter language changes to give a commission actual power of its own, rather than, uh, something the council can pass to them?
I, I think at this point, and if I'm understanding Councilmember Forbes' direction, I think at this point, she's moving to form a committee to look into the possibility of this commission, and, and as we do more research and determine what the structure of this committee would be, I think that would become clear, but at this point, uh, without knowing the form and function of any sort of commission, I can't answer whether or not it would require charter amendments, or if it would be something done by ordinance or by resolution.
Okay. Thank you, um, any other?
Mayor?
Yes?
This is, uh, city manager again.
Yes.
Um, I would, I would recommend it, as, um, thinking about the description that Councilmember Forbes, um, stated for a human rights commission. Um, I, my preference is to have, uh, citizens, police advisory oversight committee, um, whatever we determine to call it, to serve, uh, separate purpose than a human rights, um, commission. I'm not saying that we couldn't have both, but I think we need a, um, an oversight committee that deals with, um, specifically with policing and complaints and use of force. Um, and, and I, I wouldn't say that there wasn't a lot of power bestowed on the previous commission, uh, oversight committee. Um, you, we have to realize that in city government, particularly in public safety here, we do have to work within our union contracts, and we also have the Civil Service Commission in the city of Saginaw that provides protection to, um, public safety, police, and fire employees as well. And that was voted in by the citizens, um, several years ago, I believe, in the seventies. So, we, we do have to go, um, and abide by rules of both of those items as well. However, um, the, uh, previous, uh, oversight commission did have, uh, two citizens that reviewed use of force tapes with the, um, internal affairs inspector at the police department, the police chief, and the, um, human resources director. We still have non-police personnel reviewing those to get an outside an opinion, but I think, um, that item in the previous oversight committee is invaluable for transparency because, um, although they may not have the ability to discipline employees, um, they're the outlet to the community to, to tell people what they've seen at the meeting, as well as, um, outside of the meeting. That's why we wanna have people who are active in, in community groups in the city of Saginaw to be a part of that committee. So just, just a comment.
Thank you, any others? Uh, I do have some, but I'll wait until everyone is through.
Uh, I would like to say, I would like to be, definitely be a part of that committee. I was a part of it before and would like to be a part again.
You, I assume you mean the oversight committee?
Correct.
All right, any, any other comments on Councilmember Forbes' motion?
Uh, Mayor, one quick question for Councilwoman Forbes?
Yes.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Forbes, i- i- we understand it, with this, cause you say it encompassed a little bit more than, and what we're looking at for, uh, an advisory committee for the police, so this would be anything that maybe would be in violation of one of our ordinances? Cause you kind of mentioned housing, um.
Well, I think that, I think we might have to have another motion to, to, um, to discuss specifically a police oversight board, since it sounds like the manager might see that those, those two tables would be beneficial rather than having one table that would cover that.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I would say that, uh, that, that there are probably lots of other communities that have, um, uh, commissions that will oversee any other violations of, of people's rights, say, um, on the basis of gender, or sexual orientation, or gender identity, things like that. So I guess I, I would just be in favor of something a little more inclusive, but, um, if, if two tables are deemed more appropriate, I think, um, that that would be a discussion that a committee could have with staff.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I can, can support that too.
A- anybody else? Hearing, hearing nothing, I, 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 first of all, I think that we don't need a, a motion to direct manager to deal with a, to look into and create, if he feels appropriate, a citizen advi- a citizen, uh, reviewer advisory committee. I think that is where he and the chief are, are going, and, uh, I, I think, uh, they are committed to proceeding, so I don't know if we need to do anything specific on that. Um, on the issue of a, of a civil rights commission, I do have some concerns, including the one raised by Councilmember Millen about charter issues. Um, I also have the concern that we currently, that our state has a civil rights commission. Um, and I'm not sure we need to duplicate it, we are hurting as it is for funds and time and limited staff. Um, we have trouble filling a lot of our commissions and boards already. Um, the, while, with all respect to Councilmember Forbes' idea, uh, it is important certainly that we avoid or seek to avoid discrimination. I'm not sure it's for us at, at our level, since alls we could really deal with is city pub- is public institutions, not even things like churches, we really are limited to the city, and the manager already, already has full authority to deal with those issues that come into play as far as discrimination within the public purview. If we were talking a broader purview, emplo- employment, uh, housing, then that's a much broader scope, and I am very reluctant to jump on that bandwagon right now with us trying to deal with the other issues we have. My inclination would be to table this topic until we have a uh, police oversight committee in place, and we can have a better handle on what Councilmember Forbes, you are suggesting this committee would do. So, as much as I think it's important that we protect our public, I think at this point, it's premature to do that. So I would move to table the subject of a human, of a, uh, human rights commission, or civil rights commission at this point in time.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Clerk Santos, I believe the proper term that you want to do is postpone this action?
That, yes, that was.
Table is during the same meeting?
Right, yes, thank you, thank you, I would postpone that discussion.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, I, I would just like to say, I understand now, and that's why I needed clarity on what Councilwoman Forbes was saying. I do think that, that both of them are much-needed commissions, but I do beg to differ with you and Miss, and Councilman Millen, because when this group was set up in the very beginning, it was set up as a charter, and I was not on, if I'm not mistaken, okay, and I could be wrong, but when I first got on council, when this first, when this first started, I asked a question about reporting, what was the reporting? Most stuff had bylaws, and, and their information gets turned into Clerk Santos. Well, there was no, nothing for us to look at, that's why I asked the question, because when they came in, and it was Greg Ranch, Norman Bradack, and I can't remember, it was some more council people. people, they set this committee up, that committee is just not a fly-by-night thing that our city manager wants to do, and so I guess, if we didn't have to do a charter then, why would we have to do a charter now? Question, that's why I'll just see, question.
The difference between the oversight committee and a civil rights commission is the difference that I'm talking about, an oversight committee, we don't need a charter, I don't believe, manager can do that, the civil rights, I don't, I'm not saying it has to be a charter decision, but I don't have enough information to even really consider the proposal at this time. I, I, the whole question of whether it would be a charter requirement does concern me, plus the duplication with the state, and the, the question of if we do have some kind of enforcement policy, who is it that we would be enforcing it against? If it is, in fact, employers or housing people that were renters, or whatever, I'm sorry, landlords, what would be the basis of our authority? Councilmember Forbes has indicated it would be for public institutions, we need to have, I think the tabling would give us a better opportunity to look into what we might want to propose be investigated, as opposed to just assigning that as a committee to just go out and figure out anything, I'm just very reluctant to do it without having more information.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
I think that, I think that what I'm proposing is simply getting more information, there's no decision being made here, this is about exploring how other communities have done it, and how we might do it, this is not a decision to form it, and I think that a lot of the questions that you're asking, and the other people are asking, could be, could be flushed out in a committee like I'm suggesting.
All right, then.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
This is Clerk Santos. I just want to give you caution, we do have a main motion on before the council of directing the city manager to assemble a committee to review staff, the possibility of establishing this commission.
Which one, the civil rights commission?
Yeah, the human rights commission per Councilmember Forbes.
Okay.
So, you can only have one main motion on the floor, I know you don't have a second to your other motion to postpone, so that would fall off without a second.
Right, without a second, it died.
Okay, but you have one main motion that you have to finish discussion.
Right.
And vote.
Yes, and I think that's where Councilmember Forbes was responding, perhaps then, is there a inclusion in your motion, Councilmember Forbes, of who would form this, or how we would form it, or what number of members, I mean, just to give some body to it?
I think that, I think that that committee would decide the format, the powers, the membership, the, you know.
I'm talking the investigation committee that you're talking about, not.
Vote, I mean.
Because we don't, just saying establish it doesn't really help the manager or council.
How about, how about a, a committee of three council members, including Mr. Manager and whoever else he deems from his staff, that would be a, a good addition?
All right, is, are you amending your motion to include that?
I would like to amend my motion to include that we direct the city manager to assemble a committee comprised of three council members, including himself and any staff.
All right, is there a second for the motion by the original maker to amend her own motion?
William second.
William second, okay, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mayor?
Oh, yes, sorry, Councilmember Ross.
Yes, how would we pick the three council members to be on that commission, because that would be something that I'd want to be involved in?
Again, those are part of the issues.
Okay, okay, all right.
I don't have an answer, I, I guess.
Okay. All right, just asking.
Yep, thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried, and now the main motion has been amended as stated by Councilmember Forbes. Is there any further discussion on the motion by Councilmember Forbes, on the main motion? Hearing none, all in favor of establishing the committee created as suggested for the purpose of evaluating a human planning commission being established in Saginaw?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It is carried, thank you. Now, is there any other motions or miscellaneous to come before council at this time?
I do have a question for Manager Morales.
Yes, Councilmember Williams.
Is there a reason why we're waiting for the attorney to review certain policies? I mean, is there a reason why they can't be, I guess, put out now?
Mr. Manager?
I'm going to ask the city attorney to address that, because I know she's working with the chief on releasing policies.
Okay. Attorney Lusk?
I, I, are we talking the police policies?
Yes, yes, the policies that the community has come up with in email that was sent to almost everyone, it seems, but why are we waiting for, I guess, what's the reason for policies going through you?
Well, generally, police policies are exempted from public release, that, that has been the longstanding tradition in communities throughout the state, or, well, since ever, since the exemption was created under the Freedom of Information Act, but we are currently reviewing, we, we understand that, that might not be in line with 21st century policing anymore, and we are contemplating the thought of releasing those policies, or simply, I know other communities in, in the state are publishing their police policies and procedures online, so that they're publicly available readily, but to do that, to take that step, to move in that direction, we need to review those policies on a case-by-case basis, because there are certain policies that might contain police tactics or other information that, for the protection of our officers, obviously, we wouldn't want to release, so we're, we're currently looking into what the best approach is going to be, in, in light of the fact that, again, that the law allows the exemption of those policies from public place, and that's been the longstanding tradition in the state, so.
Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Williams, could we more pointedly phrase your question as, why is there a reason that we can't immediately simply adopt a policy of no neck restraints, or similar action by the police department to be, as making that not acceptable?
Yes.
As opposed to a review of all policies, simply implementing a new, a, 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 a policy that enforces what is already acknowledged by our police chief as an improper practice, is what you're saying?
Right, and, and I, I totally understand the not releasing policy to the public, I wasn't asking that, but Mayor just put it together very well, thank you.
Okay, Madam Attorney, would that be something that you would be comfortable with if the manager or the chief of police chose to do it in that manner on that particular topic?
All, all I can really say to that is I know that command staff is currently looking at those very issues, and any amendments that might need to be taken to current use of force policies, I would say that while current use of force policies might not make specific reference to things such as knees on necks, and other use of force actions that inhibit breathing in similar manners, it, those sort of actions aren't currently contemplated by use of force policy in the city of Saginaw, but, but command staff is reviewing other policies, and typically, the procedures that command staff puts their policies together, and then forwards those to me for legal review.
All right, Councilmember Williams, would you be comfortable if council simply urged management to act on that particular policy as soon as possible?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Manager, I think all council would agree that the sooner we could act on that particular issue, the better, and if, if we can't adopt it, I'm sure there's a reason that can be given, if we can adopt it, the sooner the better.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a quick comment too?
Yes, Mr. Ross, Councilman Ross.
So, yeah, so, my comment is too, and I thank Councilman Williams for bringing this up, and over the weekend too, and matter of fact, the NAACP was part of a rally that we had at our city hall last week, and from the NAACP's page, they're also, they have like five different bullet points, one is the review board, the review that we're looking at to put that review board together, but also, one of the first bullets on their page is exactly what we're talking about right now, so I am full support that we try to get this moving faster.
Any other comments before we move on? Any other comments? All right, thank you, I think we have explained our desire to the city manager on that issue, so I trust city manager will deal with it as soon as possible. Is there, if, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move, more. Bench supports.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow councilmembers for everything we've done today, it is a difficult time, but I think we, sticking together, will do well and get through this to the best of our ability, thank you all.